Time is 3:01. I call to order a meeting of the City Council of the City of Emeryville. Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Here.
Councilmember Martinez is absent. Councilmember Pats?
Here.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Here.
And Mayor Bouters.
Here. We have a quorum. Take a motion to approve the final agenda.
So moved?
Second.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor Medina and a second from Member Pats to approve the agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez is absent. Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouters.
Aye. Special orders of the day, swearing in of our new police sergeant, Michael Lee. Chief Tahada.
Shall I have it this way or that way?
Um, we can, yeah, we can turn it around if you'd like to face the audience, but turn it, yep, that's the direction to turn it.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone, and good afternoon, City Council, and thank you for this opportunity to do this today. This is one of the events that we have in the Police Department that just gives me great pleasure and great pride to celebrate one of our employees and to promote him and congratulate him on his success. So today, where is the soon-to-be Sergeant Michael Lee? Come on up here with me. So Sergeant Lee was promoted to Sergeant in May, and I want to tell you that when we posted that position, we had seven internal candidates, which says that this is a highly desirable position, and it made it that much more competitive. And all through that process, Sergeant Lee was the shining star. He kept coming out number one in the process, and he just left everybody else in the dust. And Sergeant Lee was born and raised in Oakland, and he was hired in Emeryville in 1997. He is one of the three Lee family members that we have at the department, his brother Sergeant Richard Lee over there, and Jamie, I saw her walk in, where is she? Jamie is dispatcher for us. So this is certainly a family affair. He, um, where am I here? Sergeant Lee graduated from the Alameda Sheriff's Academy in August of 1998, and he was assigned to patrol. He later transferred to our Criminal Investigations Section as a detective in 2006, and returned to patrol as a K-9 officer in 2009. During his time at the Police Department, Sergeant Lee has taken on many roles as a trainer in many areas of the department. He enjoys teaching our officers and acting as a true mentor to officers. And I just want to make a personal note here, that I have attended many of the trainings that Sergeant Lee has been the training officer for, and he takes this role very seriously, particularly our firearms training. He's very thorough, he's very patient, he's expertly skilled in this, and a very, very, very good teacher. And he is so committed to being professional and to being the best, and I want to thank you for that, because I've witnessed it, and you really are a credit to this department just for that training alone. There's another personal thing I want to say about Sergeant Lee. When you come into an agency as the new chief, it takes a long time to gain trust, and you really have to rely on people to be honest with you, to have the courage to speak up and tell you, "This is wrong, you should have done this, help me with this," whatever it is. Sergeant Lee is one of those people that has helped me bring this department forward, and it's been a journey, but I will say, he has credibility, he is just a top-notch person, the highest character that you will meet. Very, very privileged to have him on my staff. He enjoys teaching our officers, and he is a true mentor to our officers. He loves to keep in shape, and he likes the rest of us to keep in shape. He's been known to take people on runs and to encourage them, not yell at them, he'd never do that, but encourage them to keep up the running and working out. He does have a weakness for chocolate, I do know that. He is married to his beautiful wife, Catherine, and they have a son, Mikey, and a dog, Bruno. And so we're gonna swear you in as a sergeant. Is somebody gonna pin your badge?
Uh, my wife Catherine.
Catherine, would you like to come up? So, you come here, stand and raise your, you can face towards me. Okay, there you go. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Michael Lee?
I, Michael Lee.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith?
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance?
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely?
That I take this obligation freely.
And without any mental reservation?
And without mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well?
And that I will will?
And faithfully discharge?
And faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter?
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations. Would you like to say a few words?
Yeah. Uh, like to make the mayor, City Council, and the acting city manager, like, thank the chief, Tahada, Captain D.O. Tellevy, Lieutenant Alan Dar, and all the sergeants at the EPD, Robert Alton, Richard Lee, Andrew Cassianos, and Kevin Goodman. Thanks for having the confidence in me and taking on this position as sergeant. I would like to thank all the officers, dispatchers, and community members that worked with me. Everybody had a part in helping me become what I am today. I'd like to give special thanks to my wife, Catherine, and my son, Mikey. They sacrificed a lot for me in my career. I would like to thank my in-laws for the support they gave my wife and son when I wasn't there. I would thank my mom, my sisters, and my brother for giving me the support and helping me become what I am today. Again, it's back, we fall back on the people that we work with, and it's our strength as a department. And I learned a lot from you guys, and I thank you for helping me get here today. And I think I'm ready to take on the challenge as sergeant, and I hope you guys and the community and the department get to where we need to get as a police department. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And on behalf of the City Council, Sergeant Lee, I want to take this opportunity to thank you for your service to our community. There are few responsibilities as important to a public official as that of public safety, and every person at the Emeryville Police Department who works with you and alongside you and those who serve our community have done so nobly, professionally, and with a great deal of compassion to our community over many years. We are very proud to have longstanding police officers in our community who stay and work in our community, and I think your time here and your rise to this position is well-earned, as the chief has already noted, and we're very grateful and indebted to you for your service. So thank you for your service. With that, it's not customary for a special order of the day to take public comment, but in the interest of the special affair, if there are members of the public who wish to speak on this item, there will be one minute of time allotted to any public speaker who wishes to speak. That's not an invitation or obligation, but I just know that sometimes people feel compelled to speak publicly, and so I want to offer that to everyone who's gathered here. Seeing none, if you wish to not partake in the joy of discussing taxes, you are free to leave.
Mr. Sir.
Oh, wait, wait a second. Please hold. Councilmember Pats?
I just want to encourage everybody, Tuesday night is National Night Out, and we'll mention it later, but it just seems like the perfect opportunity to have another opportunity to celebrate the work the officers do. So please join them on Tuesday night.
And Chief Tahada, there is food that's on the, is in the garden, so if you'd like to go down, there's some celebration and food and cake, I hear. I'm kind of jealous now. So please make your way down the front stairs to the garden unit, enjoy the rest of your afternoon. Thank you. Well, that thinned out the public comment crowd.
Yeah.
Item five is the announcement of committee and commission vacancies. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor and Council, as you know, we opened a vacancy on July 25th to fill the remaining unexpected vacancies that we did not fill with our annual recruitment. And I'm happy to report that just in that time, we've received nine expressions of interest for our various vacancies on our commissions. The deadline to file your application is September 9th, and we will make those appointments on, at the council meeting on October 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilmember, special announcements or reports on meetings attended. Member Pats?
So this week, I had the pleasure of being a part of the Housing Committee of Alameda County, and we did our annual scholarship awards. We were able to give out $15,000 worth of scholarships and an additional 2,500 for one of the, in the name of one of the council, one of the housing authority members who passed this year. And so I, as I don't think we've announced them officially yet, I won't go down that route, but it was incredible to see the applicants. We had people going to UC San Diego and Davis. It was quite an incredible list of people, and so it was a great honor to do that.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Medina?
Nothing to report.
Member Donahue?
Nothing to report.
I have three quick reports. First is a report back from the Alameda County Healthy Homes Board. I want to do two things. One, I want to thank the city staff for their work in helping put on the repair, renovation, and painting trainings, the RRP rule trainings here. City of Emeryville last year adopted a lead safety ordinance, which we implemented in May. That is one of the first of its kind here in California, which proactively requires building, construction that falls within the ambit of the EPA's rule to be pre-certified. The constructor has to be pre-certified in the safe remediation of lead in order to make those types of changes to a building. And we've kind of earned slowly a reputation for being a leader in that space, and it's my understanding, having attended the meeting last week, that every city within the JPA, the Joint Powers Authority for the Lead Board, has now received, all their code officials have received, training on lead safety here in Emeryville, with the exception of the City of Alameda. And so we're doing great work in helping improve that here in the Bay Area. Also, I want to let my colleagues know that one of the attendees at that event was a property owner here in the City of Emeryville who lived in the Triangle on 47th Street. And that property owner left the meeting and felt very inspired about the importance of lead safety, and through the information provided at our training, contacted the county and was awarded a $20,000 HUD grant, which will turn six apartment units on 47th Street that will be completely rehabilitated with a HUD grant to be made lead safe for the families that live there. So, good work. Second is an ACTC update. Last week, the Alameda County Transportation Commission voted to make our mid-cycle budget adjustments to our capital expenditure plan. I'm very pleased to report, that's a very long document, by the way, very pleased to report that after we received the State Transportation Commission grant for the railroad crossing safety improvement, which was a 70% funded project, which was the max that you could get for a project, the county was interested in helping us with the 30% match. Strategically, we are up for another grant cycle to begin this fall, but due to some unspent monies in the budget from this past cycle, working closely with our staff, I'm pleased to report that I was able to get the $1.8 million balance funded as a budget adjustment, which means it will not count against any of our future cycle requests. So we are 100% funded for the rail safety initiative at this point. And lastly, I serve on the Air Quality District Board, and there are two updates from that. First, there's Assembly Bill 617, which is designed to prioritize local communities that are disinvested and highly impacted by air pollution with air pollution abatement programs. The board voted on Wednesday of this week, the nine-county Bay Area Board voted, and the West Oakland community was selected to be the first in the state, in our county, to, in this region, to be assisted through that program. So we will be working very closely with them, because obviously improvements to the quality of life and air in West Oakland will benefit the City of Emeryville. And separately, I took a tour of the Chevron refinery this week. I was appointed to a committee, which is responsible for the oversight of refinery and refinery emissions here in the Bay Area. And it's fascinating to take a tour of a facility that is legitimately four and a half times the size of Emeryville. It's a 4.8 mile facility, square miles. If you wish to learn more about how we test air quality here in the Bay Area, please let me know. I will be asking the Sustainability Committee to talk about air monitors in the city and providing people in our community with live air updates to improve the quality of life for their families. Those are my reports. Is there a city manager's report today?
And Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you know, sometimes there's an opportunity to go off-script, and since I haven't really been making too many reports, I thought I'd take a few moments and sort of pass this along. And it really relates to an item on the agenda, too, but more than that, you know, a lot of times, we don't take the opportunities in life to sort of reflect on who we are and what we do, and I think the sergeant's promotion today sort of stimulated my reasoning to go ahead and read a letter I want to read to you, because clearly there's, police officers are willing to lay their life down to protect our citizens. All of us contribute to the community in so many wonderful ways. And so I've got, received a letter from Councilmember Jeanette Friski of Moraga. Mayor, you may well know that she received some very sad news here recently. And I had the opportunity to serve as interim manager in Moraga and get to know Jeanette. Clearly, the news that she has received has been pretty devastating for her family. You know, as public servants, we have a wonderful opportunity to make a difference in life, and we love it, we love the challenges, we love the opportunities, the many relationships that we develop, and we nurture, and we build, and keep with us for our life. So today, I wish to share this letter from Councilmember Friski, which will break your heart, but also show that Jeanette's drive to never give up and to continue the mission, and that it's not about self, it's about that bigger mission in life. Let me read that letter. This is to the citizens of Moraga, her colleagues, and her friends. "The other day, I was in the doctor's office." Also shows a little bit of sense of humor that she has. "And I asked, I was asked to pick one of five emoji representations of my well-being: happy, content, anxious, angry, or depressed. I looked at it for a few moments and seconds, and finally said, none of them really expressed my feelings at the moment. As with many things, we try to distill the most complicated situations down to simple components that can be tracked or compared. How does one synthesize a new diagnosis of stage IV non-small cell lung cancer into one of five emojis? I'd be lucky if I could even sort out my emotions, thoughts, questions, and strategy of an attack in a 1,000-page notebook." That brings me to today. When I'm choosing to resign from my position as council member of the town of Moraga, I find I no longer have the energy, will, or commitment to do something I used to revere. My resignation will be official on August 22nd, and our town manager and council will start defining the process for, replacement for the rest of my term, which ends in 2020. Lung cancer remains, and here she is with the mission, lung cancer remains the leading cause of cancer-related deaths worldwide, accounting for over 1 million deaths yearly. And of course, we happen to have an item on the agenda tonight, so I know she would love us reading this letter. Approximately 85,000 of newly diagnosed lung cancers are NSCLCs. Over the last decade, the proportion of NSCLC cases diagnosed among never smokers, and I have never smoked, has more than doubled. Approximately 25% of lung cancer patients are lifelong never smokers, which means that lung cancer in never smokers would rank as the seventh most common cause of cancer mortality around the world, if considered as a separate category. An increasing percentage of these cases are diagnosed in younger patients, including those who are physically fit and otherwise healthy, and in women, particularly those of Asian descent. And at late stages of the disease, an estimated 20% of lung cancer in U.S. women now occurs among never smokers. However, in Asia, this proportion is as high as 80%, and the same may be true of U.S.-Asian women, some startling statistics that few know or recognize. The town will do what is appropriate for its continuing governance. As for me and my family, we are all supporting my well-being and healing. I know there are many of you who would like to support me as well, as I have made many acquaintances, with so many folks that have become my friends. Please feel free to contact me on my email. Phone is not that good a method currently, as I will be off and on sleeping and relaxing as part of my resiliency plan. One more thing you can do, take care of yourself, spend time with your families, take care of time, take the time to do what gives you joy. This, I feel, is the best payback anyone can give to others. I'm sure you all join me in wishing Jeanette and her family hopes and prayers for the future."
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Ex parte communications. Are there members of up here who have communications to report? I'll ask Member Donahue, do you have anything to report?
Well, I received various emails about our smoking ordinance 12.1.
Okay. Vice Mayor Medina?
I received the same emails, I believe.
Member Pats?
Same emails.
Okay. I likewise received a number of emails from the American Heart Association, the American Cancer Society, the American Lung Association, and several residents regarding item 12.1. Item nine is public comment for the consent agenda and items not on this agenda. Are there members of the public who wish to speak for an item not on this agenda? Seeing none, there is no consent calendar today. We move to public hearings. Number 11 is a public hearing, resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville establishing the fiscal year 2018-19 Property and Business Improvement District Annual Assessment Levy for the respective parcels within the improvement district with an increase of 3% on all parcels, and approving the preliminary budget submitted by the Emeryville Transportation Management Association for Service Year 2019. Susan Shea?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and councilmembers. For your consideration today, it's a resolution establishing the fiscal year 2018-19 PBIT Annual Assessment Levy. Staff recommends that the City Council approve the 3% levy increase. Staff also recommends that the City Council approve the TMA's preliminary budget for service year 2019. The final budget will be brought to the City Council for final approval in the fall. Does the City Council have any questions regarding the resolution?
Are there any questions for Susan about the percentage requested by the TMA? Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
Members of the public, this is a public hearing. Madam Clerk, the time is 3:24. The public hearing is open. Members of the public who wish to speak on this item have three minutes to do so. Any members of the public wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, the time is 3:24. Madam Clerk, the public hearing is closed. I'll bring it back for discussion. Member Pats, is there anything to discuss?
No, I'm ready to vote on this.
Member Medina?
No, I'll move approval.
Member, Member Donahue?
The 3% seems accurate.
I just have a brief comment. I want to thank staff, and I want to thank the TMA, and I want to thank my colleagues. Over the past year, we had arrears from a lot of direct bills, and I'm very pleased to report, I don't believe the money has directly rolled over to them, I think it's in the account and it hasn't, we do transfer twice a year, right? Or once a year?
Twice.
Twice a year. So the money transfers twice a year, but I'm very pleased to report to the public that we entered a full repayment agreement with the Emery Unified School District earlier this year for the entire principal due and owing, and that seven of the other 11 properties, seven of 10 properties that are direct billed have fully paid their arrears, and we are down to just a couple properties that are delinquent accounts, and so the city has really worked hard this past year to clean up those books, and I appreciate my colleagues supporting mass transit and my, giving me the ability to work on that with the staff. And so with that, we have a motion from Vice Mayor Medina?
I'll second.
Yeah, I'd like to add personally to thank our mayor for the enormous amount of work he's put into collecting these arrears and making sure that our TMA has adequate funding to move forward and provide excellent public transit. You've really stepped up and done something phenomenal here.
Thank you very much. And without further ado, Madam Clerk, there's a motion by Vice Mayor Medina and a second from Member Pats to approve this resolution. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez is absent. Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouters.
Aye, the resolution is approved. Onto action items. Item 12.1 is a second reading of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Emeryville repealing and replacing Chapter 29 of Title V of the Emeryville Municipal Code. I presume that there's not a formal presentation this evening on this item?
No, there isn't. The council had adopted a new first reading of the ordinance last, at your last meeting, and so this is the second reading for that.
Thank you. There are members of the public who have submit comment cards, so we will take public comment unless there are questions first from members of the board? No. Okay, so the first person whose card I have is Liz Williams. And members of the public have three minutes.
Great, thank you very much. Liz Williams at Americans for Nonsmokers' Rights. We're on Berkeley on San Pablo Ave. And I first want to express our support for the ordinance to expand smoke-free protections to multi-use housing, so that all of the residents in the city can breathe smoke-free at home. That's really wonderful. Oh, thank you very much. I also do want to express our opposition to the newer language that would allow smoking in tobacco retail stores and lounges. That's something that Emeryville has prohibited since 2006, but that new language would allow the proliferation of cigar bars or hookah lounges or other smoking venues here in the city. And so just wondering if that's really the intention of what the council is looking to do for the city. People who work in tobacco retailers should have a safe, smoke-free workplace, just like any other worker here in the city, and we think that people's right to breathe, smoke-free air at their, at their job should take precedence over, you know, increasing the ability to allow indoor smoking. It has been discussed the health impacts, but really want to help you consider, if you do want to have this new amendment added, we would strongly encourage you to only allow these businesses in freestanding buildings, if at all, so that there isn't a drift issue with adjacent businesses, so, or residences that could be attached. So thank you for considering this issue as a whole. We really appreciate this step moving forward on the multi-use housing, and would like to see that smoking portion not move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Serena Chen?
Good afternoon. My name is Serena Chen. I'm so used to saying good evening. This is great. I can still see the sun. I've been working in tobacco control and prevention for almost 30 years. I know I don't look like it, but I am. And I have to say, when my son's cohorts went to college, they would call me up from whatever state they were in, and they would say, "Serena, Serena, what do I do?" And I said, "Well, what's the problem?" And they said, "Well, they're smoking." And I said, "Where are you, in a restaurant?" I said, "What state are you in?" And she said, she was in Memphis. And I said, "Honey, you're not in California anymore." But what I realized is that I was part of a large group of health advocates who changed the way children, our children see tobacco, and changed the way our children look at secondhand smoke. And every step along the way, we try to tell kids and tell ourselves that it's not a normal thing. I mean, I grew up knowing all these cigarette ditties, you know, filter, flavor, flip-top box, right? I know, you guys, half of you are too young for this. But basically, my father came to this country at the age of 26, he did not smoke, but he started smoking because he wanted to be more American, because at that time, American men smoked at a rate of 50%. So basically, the society instructs people as to what is good and what is not good. And when you turn around and say, "It's not good to smoke in your home, but here's a smoking lounge," it frightens me. I have a colleague who I started out with in tobacco control, and she was a younger woman than I am, and she basically, she's a Filipina, and she basically was diagnosed with lung cancer. She never smoked, but she worked in a bar during her college years to help pay for her tuition. That secondhand smoke may very well have triggered whatever cells were in her lungs to later on contract lung cancer. So I really, you know, in light of the story that, not story, the letter that was shared today, just think about the future, think about the fact that kids see, "Wow, smoking lounges, I can't wait until I can get old enough to go in there." Or a lot of young women go in and accompany their male friends and vice versa, and who do not smoke. So basically, you're exposing a whole new cohort to secondhand smoke, and you don't need to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Amanda Gutzwiler?
Hi, good afternoon. My name's Amanda. I'm with the American Lung Association. Thank you for sharing that letter earlier today. I've been working with the American Lung Association for I myself had childhood asthma and was probably attributed to the fact that even though my dad told my grandparents not to smoke inside, you know, it was, you know, a few decades ago. So I know how tough it is when you're surrounded by second-hand smoke. And at the American Lung Association, you know, we do support policies that do prohibit second-hand smoking, and we're so grateful for the ordinance you originally drafted that did include those protections. Very strong policy. However, you know, with the recent exemption to smoking lounges, it's not as strong. According to the U.S. Surgeon General, there's no risk-free level of exposure to second-hand smoke. So employees who do work in these smoking lounges will be exposed to the second-hand smoke. Second-hand smoke does cause lung cancer in those who haven't previously smoked and increases the risk for heart disease, stroke, and chronic lung problems. Although, you know, we do see a rise in, you know, women in particular, non-smoking women who are being diagnosed with lung cancer, you know, that exposure could be one of those causes. So overall, you know, we want to encourage you to, you know, pass this ordinance and not include an exemption for smoking lounges. You know, at the end of the day, everybody deserves to have a good job and shouldn't have to choose between a good job or good health. You know, one in seven workers reports being exposed to second-hand smoke in the workplace. And unfortunately, low-income workers and young adults are more likely to be exposed to second-hand smoke at work. So again, while we do support the ordinance which provides strong, smoke-free protections for residents of Emeryville, we do not support the recent amendment which removes the protections for workers in smoking lounges. So again, thank you so much.
Thank you. Tamika Johnson?
Good afternoon, council and staff. Tamika Johnson with the Alameda County Public Health Department. I first wanted to say, one of the reasons I'm speaking is that last time I wasn't able to hear you, and so for ALA considerations, for those that are harder of hearing like me, I would strongly encourage the council members, if you could, put the mic in front of your face so that we can actually hear you. That would be very helpful. Secondly, I'd like to echo the comments from my colleagues who have spoken about supporting this ordinance. I'm so happy to be in partnership with you all to provide education to Emeryville residents should it pass, but I am concerned about normalizing smoking in the form of smoking lounges within the city of Emeryville. So again, I look forward to a partnership with you, hopefully without the addition of the smoking lounges in the ordinance. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak at this time? Seeing none, I'll bring it back for discussion. Member Pats?
I don't have anything at this time.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Nothing at this time.
For Donahue?
I am responsive to the arguments about workers getting second-hand smoke. So I would like it if our ordinance could allow smoking lounges, but require that those that work there would get no second-hand smoke.
Is that your comment?
That's my comment.
So this is unusual for me, because I normally wouldn't do this like this, but I feel like I have to just be true to myself on this. I want to ask the council to reconsider the prior decision to remove the provision that prohibited smoking lounges. I spent a lot of time thinking about this, and I appreciate everybody who's in the advocacy community coming out on this, and I just want to, I want to give perspective to my colleagues in a friendly way, hopefully, as to why I think this is really important. Years ago, we didn't have bike lanes. We didn't have separated bike lanes. We didn't do that, right? Children biked on the sidewalks in their neighborhood. People biked at the perils of being doored by a parked car, being hit by the bus in the right lane. And now we build infrastructure that separates bicycles as much as possible from traffic. We separate them because we want to protect them. It'd be very easy for a community to say, "We don't need to regulate this today," or "That may be the best practice, but we can let it slide over here on this street or that street." We don't do that. We don't build housing the same way we used to. We build with quality materials. We don't put asbestos in housing, right? It's cheaper, but we don't do it. It's a way that it was done in the past and it was efficient. We don't do it. We build with reusable materials, with environmentally friendly materials, and we build with standards from lessons we've learned. When it comes to playground equipment at a school, we used to, the playground equipment I grew up on was metal frames, monkey bars were 12 feet off the ground, and there were rocks below it. Now we use, I learned, corknut, rubber, plastic, other pieces that are safer for children, even though we could still build them the other way. The city had a really good policy in place. The policy that we had in place was not to allow smoking lounges for the various reasons that the four people who spoke at public comment have made. We know that when you allow the existence of smoking in the community, it creates an environment, just like adding a lane on a freeway induces more people to drive, you actually can create an environment where people, especially young people, feel that smoking is normal or okay. And it is degrading to the quality of life of workers to be in an environment where they're subjected to something that is a known toxic to their health. It is not good for young people who associate, who want to be cool, who want to socialize, who want to fit in, who go with the friend who smokes and don't smoke themselves but are subjected to second-hand smoke. And I just don't understand why we feel that this is the thing we have to carve out of what is otherwise, according to every health advocate and every heart and lung association group that has contacted us and the county that is supporting us, an otherwise excellent ordinance. And so I'm saying these things not to shame any of my colleagues here or state that a difference in opinion is not welcome, but because I really, I really want to not pass up on the opportunity to do what I think is really right for the future. This council has done so many things that are right for the future of this community on housing, on transportation, on child welfare, on education, on public safety. We really are innovating and doing the right thing, and this is a step backwards, and so I'm sure I see a lot of pens furiously writing rebuttals to me, and my hope is that you listened as much as you were preparing to rebut. But at this point, I'll open for discussion. Vice Mayor Medina?
Yeah, I was taking notes. I wasn't writing my rebuttal. You know, this ordinance allows public smoking in the right-of-way. It doesn't completely eliminate it. So it does not completely segregate smoking, and we cannot completely do that. We cannot not allow smoking in the right-of-way because it's currently legal state nationally. I would point out that not all streets have separated bike lanes on them. I wish more of them did, but even in the Netherlands, not every single street has a separated bike lane. There are separate places for people to do different things, and that's part of a lot of policymaking, and I don't think that that is necessarily the strongest case here. I haven't seen any evidence presented to me today that says that smoking lounges increase or encourage smoking in youth, and I'd be very interested in seeing some data to that effect. When I was doing research for a marijuana ordinance, what I did find was that buffer zones for tobacco were actually ineffective in preventing smoking adoption among teenagers. And that was really surprising to me, and not a thing that I knew before, but it kind of seems to contradict this thought process that having a smoking lounge causes teens to start smoking. So I'd be really curious to see some evidence around that, because I've heard anecdotal evidence, which frankly is not the strongest for me. What is? The one argument that I am actually really responding to right now is the workers' rights one. I agree with most of my colleagues to my right over here that that actually is something that I had not considered, which is really ignorant of me, considering that I have a background working for a labor union. And as much as, you know, you could say that if someone chooses to work at a smoking lounge, you know, they know that they're going to get second-hand smoke, I think that there's not always as many jobs, and people don't have those kinds of choices, and so not providing adequate workers' protection is something that's given me pause here and something that I'm receptive to discussing further.
Member Pats?
So I've had time to think about this. I was not as articulate as I would like to have been. I'm not approaching this from a health perspective in the way that the lobbying groups have come out today to talk. I'm approaching it from a harm reduction perspective. I don't think about tobacco just as an air pollutant. You know, I'm somebody who bought a home fairly close to a freeway in an industrial small town. When we talk about lung cancer, when we talk about what the EPA is rolling back, smoking is unfortunately not the solution to all of our healthcare problems. So I look at it from an addiction perspective, and I look about it, who is smoking? I do work with the youth. I work at a high school. I've worked with youth at risk my entire professional career, and when we talk about making smoking cool, I don't know that smoking has been cool or not cool in decades. What I do know is the people who smoke tend to be lower income, tend to be the most housing at risk, tend to be disabled, mentally ill, tend to have addiction challenges. And so when we talk about the health risks, I don't know that smoking is their biggest health risk. I struggle with that, and I struggled with this ordinance from the get-go because it has zero impact on me, but it has a huge impact on somebody who is in precarious housing situation, dealing with their mental health needs, dealing with their addiction needs, dealing with everything they have, and happen to be a smoker. And we have said, "Well, as long as you're pacing outside, you may smoke. Other than that, you're on your own," irrespective of their mobility challenges, irrespective of everything else. You know, I hear the impassioned pleas. I grew up in a smoking household. I detest smoking. I'm also under the impression that the rules for employees at smoking lounges are very restrictive. I thought it was owner-operator only, but I could be wrong on that. So again, I also have very, I love it when we talk about a problem that's not in front of us yet. I don't know that we will ever find somebody opening up a smoking lounge. I'm curious to see how that goes through the process, but I do know that if this language is not adjusted now, it'll never be looked at again. And as we move away from, I don't even know what percentage of the populace smokes now, but I'm, you know, when I was 18, it was much larger than it is now. And so, yeah, so I'm, I'm still, for this one carve-out, we need places, and it is a legal activity, and it is not an activity I wish to engage in, it's not an activity I wish to see others engage in, but I'm not approaching this from a "we're outlawing smoking across the board." Bring that ordinance to me, which I know we can't do, and I'll have a different discussion. I'm much more in favor of that. But I go back to what Member Medina said. When you look at all the things that have been put in place, I always laugh, they're like, "Oh, let's keep it, you know, within 25 feet of schools, because, you know, that'll keep kids from smoking." They don't work. So I support this ordinance as-is. I was hoping that at the second reading, we could vote to support it and have this move into effect in December. So.
Member Donahue?
I don't have anything further to contribute to this discussion.
Is there any interest in revising the ordinance?
I have a question about what you brought up about them being restricted to being owner-operated. Is that true in the state of California, that smoking lounges must be owner-operated?
I'm not aware of that, but...
I don't have that information in front of me.
I have no idea.
Like, because of OSHA, you couldn't smoke inside of a workplace. There was a whole weird thing on that. So, why there's not more smoking lounges. It's not that there's ordinance everywhere, it's just that there's not a lot of them because you can't have employees. That is the impression I'm under. I'm not basing this on fact. I'm simply...
Well, I want to respond to a couple of things then, because one of the statements I wrote down that you said was, "The problem is not in front of us right now." The reason the problem is not in front of us is because we effectively didn't invite the problem, that the ordinance for 12 years precluded the problem from coming to us. And so I'm not, to me, we are inviting the problem, and then we are inviting ourselves to have city time spent potentially deliberating over this and how to do it. And I would note that the ordinance does not regulate smoking lounges, does not put requirements in smoking lounges in any way, because we literally just removed the provision that all it said was they're prohibited. So there is nothing that we substituted into this ordinance. I think it's a poor policy decision, and I am not a smoking expert. I don't pretend to be. But I do work as a policy writer in my full-time job, and I have never seen a prohibition be removed with the presumption that we will just deal with it when it comes. There's no regulations on this right now. To me, it's inviting a problem that nowhere else in the county do they do this like this. We are inviting a problem. We are going five steps forward to take away something that was part of the baseline thing that got us a C grade. I remember that spreadsheet. We got a C of cities in the county. We got a letter C grade for our smoking ordinance, but one of the things that kept us from being an F was a prohibition on smoking lounges. And so I am just really confused by this. I completely disagree with the claims. I have represented low-income people in low-income housing for many years. I've had over 3,000 people who lived, and I went through the period of time where housing authorities had to actually remove smoking from public housing, which if you want to talk about a difficult task, removing smoking from public housing was the biggest fight. It wasn't bedbugs, it wasn't even three strikes and one strike, it was fricking smoking, because, to your point, low-income people do disproportionately smoke, right? And there have been a lot of things that are regressive about how we've regulated smoking, taxing smoking to the point where the cost of the tax exceeds the cost of the PAC. Who is that hurting? Poor people. So I appreciate a lot of the sentiments that you're raising, because I actually believe that there are a lot of policies that have been financial in nature to help control the health epidemic and the cost of healthcare, and we want to move to a single-payer system, but we continue to allow things that create and increase the cost of healthcare in this country that make it easy for politicians to say, "Look at the bottom line of that bill that the state has. I'm not going to that model." And the biggest contributor to that is smoking. That, I can tell you, is a fact. That is a fact. Smoking and obesity are the single biggest contributors to why we have out-of-control healthcare costs and resistance from people in the middle and the right to making single-payer and universal healthcare a reality for people. So for me, I am troubled because it is not, to your point, it is not about trying to deprive a person of an individual liberty. The reality is that unlike cannabis, people can smoke in the public right-of-way, and I have walked in and out of the Cabrini-Green Towers when they existed to a dozen people outside chain-smoking, and they adapt to it very quickly, wheelchair crutches and all, they adapt to it. And the reality is that we did the right thing on the housing component here, but I'm very troubled by the notion that we feel that we have to create an enclosed space, which is very different. When we say that there isn't a space for them, right now, they stand in an open-air environment to smoke, which does not have indirect harms and direct harms, for that matter, on other people. But as soon as you put it in an enclosed building, you are harming the people who work there. And I don't buy, to Ally's point, and I appreciate you acknowledging it, I don't buy that people who choose to work in a tobacco shop that now has a smoking lounge, well, that's their choice. Like, that is, think about the position, especially you, and I mean this in a very nice way. You have been a guardian of the minimum wage, and nobly so, on our minimum wage. It is, we would not expect workers in our community to get less than they deserve, and I just don't know why we would subject workers in a potential smoke shop to something less than they deserve, which is clean frickin' air. I just don't understand it. And so I have, you know, and I know, and the irony, and I really love you, and the irony of this is, you're like, "I really hope we could just read this as second reading." That's what I hoped at the last meeting. I was totally sideswiped by the need to do this, and I'm really asking my colleagues to think about what we've done in changing this, and really asking us to reconsider and to adopt the original ordinance we put forward, and if we want to form an ad hoc committee to talk about designated smoking spaces or whatever, to allow for some sort of other outdoor place where people can congregate that's safe, I'm open to doing that, because I appreciate what I think you're trying to address. I just don't think it's being done the way you want. And I will just say, you know, as an ancillary comment, I had lunch with a couple residents yesterday who live in the Pacific Park Plaza, and they told me how, over the weekend, they were, people were talking in the lobby, and the conversation was, "Did you read that the City Council is making smoking in buildings legal again?" Doesn't mean that's what we did, but that is, we have confused the public... is, that is, we have confused the public by having this conversation the way we're doing it. And I think we really need to be clear that we have made Emeryville a smoke-free community to the extent that that's the case, that we support good public health policy, that we support the rights for people to live in a healthy environment, and we support the greater cause, which is to promote healthcare for all Californians, because low-income people are deprived, have been traditionally and continue to be deprived of health clinics in their communities and other resources that improve public health. But the reason those resources aren't available is because insurance companies point to the statistics and the algorithms that say, this is how much we have to insure people at, and these are the rates we need, and this is what the state has to reimburse us. And so the state says, we have no more money to go and expand health clinics in communities. And I just think that we are, we are one square mile, and if we even ever, to your point, have a single smoke shop, the argument could be, what is the overall impact? But it is the message we are sending that this is somehow okay, that to me is, for those who support that, I don't know how you can say you also support health. I don't know how you can say it, because you are telling workers that you don't support their health, and you were saying that you don't support the greater public health around healthcare for people. And I want to give you a chance to respond if you want.
So I think things are not mutually exclusive, and I don't appreciate you pigeonholing, if you don't do this, then you're doing that. That's a, you're better at having a debate than that. And so I disagree with that whole premise. I don't buy the premise of that I'm against health because I'm for smoking lounges. I just, it's too complex, and you know that. You know that this whole thing is just too complex to pigeonhole it. It's either this or that. For me, it comes down to, we have, you know, it's a public space. We have a lot of places for a lot of different behaviors. And I hear you. I hear every argument you're making. Like I said, I'm not a smoker. I'm not pro-smoking, but I just see this as, this is one more way we're going to bury this law, and this is a prohibition that we don't need. We don't need to say, oh, we can't have smoking lounges. And I hear you, that workers don't have choices where to go. You know, again, I get all of that, and yet we have all these other activities. I mean, I, you can argue with this. I would also argue the numbers in the healthcare debate, universal healthcare, we already know is cheaper than what we're spending currently on healthcare. So what is not cheaper is the piecemeal that gets us there. And I get that that's where your numbers are coming from. When we talk about putting health clinics in and doing all of those things, that's right. The Band-Aid approach is too expensive, and it's particularly expensive in the high-risk groups. But if we went to universal healthcare, we know that would be cheaper than the approach we have now. So again, it's, I hear the arguments, and I'm all for a lot of the things that you're saying, and I do support a lot of what you're saying. But I think this one place, this one ability that we have, you know, we're Emeryville. We have a casino. We can talk about the health impacts of gambling. We have bars. We can talk about the health impacts of drinking. You know, we have cannabis, and we don't talk about the health impacts of cannabis. What I, you know, we could talk about the health benefits of, I almost want someplace I didn't want to go, other things. So for me, this is just something that, sorry, this is just something that, apologies. This is just something that is a place where we can create an environment, we can change this law, because we're not going to look at this again, right? We've gone as far as we can.
Oh, we will when somebody comes and proposes it now. I think we absolutely will look at.
No, I know we won't look at the overall law, the smoking ordinance.
We'll be back here.
So anyways.
Member Donahue?
I think we will look at it. And so I have a motion that we put together something that allows for smoking lounges with certain conditions. And we come back and we continue it. And we say that a smoking lounge would have to protect workers from secondhand smoke, and that they would have to be in a freestanding building, not a part of other buildings. And delays our project, but I think we could reach perhaps a majority for that point of view.
I have a suggestion. I'm, at this point, I agree, those are the two things I had also had written down, Scott, standalone and workers' rights. I would, at this point, think we could pass the original version, create an ad hoc committee to form an amendment that has exemptions and has a really well-thought-out what the impact of a smoking lounge could be on the community, maybe actually look at, what are the rules for owner-operator? What are the impacts on worker health? What are the impacts of having one in your community if there's any documented impact of that, and come back with an amendment process. But I, at this point, I think we can move forward and pass the original version that protects people who live in multi-unit housing.
The original version being the one on the agenda or the one that was originally proposed last time?
The one that was originally proposed.
So is that a motion?
That is a motion.
Does that make a new first reading?
There's a motion to approve, so we, there's a, you need a read-by-title-only again in order to do that?
Yes, if we could.
Would you like to make a motion?
I had moved to read-by-title-only, the previous version.
With the clear understanding that Section 5-29.09, the section that was removed related to smoking lounges, the motion, I believe, is to reinsert the paragraph.
To reinsert this paragraph, yes.
Right. So this is new for a second.
I'll second the motion to read-by-title-only.
Am I voting on the...
You may call the roll. Oh, you're going to read it?
No, no.
By-title-only?
No, she needs to call the roll first.
Oh, sorry. Yes, go ahead.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez is absent. Councilmember Pats?
No.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouters.
Aye. Mr. City Attorney?
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Emeryville repealing and replacing Chapter 29 of Title V of the Emeryville Municipal Code, Smoking Pollution Control, sequel determination exempt pursuant to Section 15061 Sub-B3 of the California Sequel Guidelines.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion by Vice Mayor Medina and a second by Member Donahue to approve the ordinance at first reading reinstating the paragraph that was removed at the meeting on July 24, 2018. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez is absent. Councilmember Pats?
No.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouters.
Aye. So we'll come back at the next meeting for a second reading.
That's correct.
In the interim for staff direction purposes, Vice Mayor Medina.
Oh, I would suggest that if there be an ad hoc committee forum to look into Amendment Five and the possibilities of the workers' rights implications and inserting language about it being a standalone building.
Okay.
Would you like to be on that committee, Mr. Pats?
Certainly.
Is there other members who wish to be on that committee?
I'll do it unless nobody else wants to. Scott?
I'll do it.
Okay.
So we have an ad hoc committee of Member Donahue and Member Pats that will work offline while we work on addressing the issue that's raised. Item 12.1 is finished.
Actually, Mayor, there's actually, there's also the accompanying resolution entering the MOU with the county.
Is there a motion on the resolution for the MOU with the county?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Medina, second by Member Donahue to approve the resolution with the county of Alameda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez is absent. Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouters.
Aye. Resolution is approved. Item 12.2 is consideration of the city council ballot argument in favor of cannabis business license tax for November 6, 2018 election. Members, have you all had a chance to review it?
Yes.
Are there any questions from members?
Nope.
Member Donahue, do you have any questions?
No.
This time, I'll open public comment. Members of the public who wish to speak on the ballot initiative, the ballot statement, argument that's been proposed may do so. Seeing and hearing none, is there discussion or a motion?
We had one here.
Oh, I'm sorry. You know what, I'm sorry, I have this other card here. Serena Chen, there's public comment. I forgot you gave two cards.
I couldn't resist. It's very important that cities gain some revenue from cannabis businesses, and this tax is a very good idea. Is it a ceiling?
Yes.
Can it fluctuate in case of the market? Because I'm seeing in the paper today that both Oregon and Colorado pot prices dropped dramatically. So to have a tax instated from the very front end enables you to fluctuate to help with that market issue. I would like to say that it's very important to allocate some of the funds back into health education and prevention, because the other true thing that I read from the other states is that the high schools are suffering the impact of having marijuana more available to the students, suspensions are up and things like that. So we really need to educate the kids and their parents as to what today's cannabis is like versus what the parents might have experienced in their youth. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the public who wish to comment? All right, seeing none. At this time, is there discussion? No, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion by Member Pats and a second by Vice Mayor Medina to approve the ballot statement, the ballot argument. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel...
Oh, I'm sorry, time.
No, go ahead.
You know?
I'm good.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez is absent. Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouters.
Aye. Member Pats?
Just want to quickly, since Member Martinez can't be here, this was one of the many things that she helped walk over the line, so I just want to say a special thank you to her for that.
And it should be noted, I know we keep saying she's absent, but it's an excused absence, as August is usually our month off. Okay, at this time, department head reports. I see no department heads except the police chief. Do you have a report? No other department head reports? No. Okay, future agenda item requests. Member Pats, do you have any?
Nope.
Member Donahue?
I would like to somehow have a honoring of the innovation side of our art and innovation moniker for our city, that innovation is something we've decided is a part of our community, and it really is, and that we explore this in a way that could look to some of our innovative businesses and people in town that aren't being honored for other reasons. But, and I would like to explore that as an idea and would think that...
As a celebration here at Town Hall, sort of thing?
Yes, as a celebration, and that maybe people from, who work in our city might be honored for particular reasons, for their innovation.
Sort of like our stuff that we've done in the prior months?
Yes.
If members are okay, I'd like to offer to work with Member Donahue and facilitate that this fall.
Certainly.
Sounds great.
Okay. Is that okay with you?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll work on that. Member Medina?
Nothing at this time.
I have nothing at this time either. Madam Clerk, I do have something. What is it?
There was the letter that you sent to us, something to do with air quality or lead...
Oh, you're right. Thank you about that. So there's a, the governor, thank you.
It's either one of us, as always.
It's always one of us forgets. The governor is holding a conference on air quality in the first, second week of September, September 12 to 14. It will be here in San Francisco. And the air districts of California are proposing a, this is called a Statement of Purpose, and it is aimed at eliminating diesel PM, which is diesel particulate matter, for those who are learning the lingo like me. And the statement is Diesel Free by 33, the goal being to phase out the use of diesel vehicles to reduce air pollution. Diesel PM, by the way, the city of Emeryville is one of the communities most impacted by diesel PM. This is just a statement of intent. It's not binding anyone to do anything in particular, but they are asking Bay Area communities councils to sign on to this in, before the governor's event on the 12th here. And in order to do that, that, it's not appropriate for me to just sign something like that. So if folks are okay, we'll just discuss it on the 4th.
That sounds good.
Sound fine with you?
Sounds good.
Okay, it's on the 4th. Are there any other final items? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, the time is 4:05. This meeting is adjourned. The time is 4:05, Madam Clerk. I call to order the city council's management authority for the city of Emeryville closed session. Please note that four of the five members are still here, and Councilmember Martinez has an excused absence. Are there ex parte communications?
Nope.
Is there public comment for the closed session? Seeing none. Will adjourn to closed session.